I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Welcome to the June meeting of the Mount Glen Borough Council. As always, we will start with anyone wishing to address council. Do we have a few people here? So I will open the floor to those few people. We'd like to go first.
I will.
Okay.
Step in, I'll have the council for a second. It was for the Sweetie Festival. I just came from a meeting, caught part of it, but they want to make sure they're allowed to have horse, they want to do horse rides, and we thought about ordering up at the park on the outer, you know, the track.
Okay.
Whatever you want to call it, road out around there, and they want to be able to use the restroom, so if somebody needs to use the bathroom.
What day are they looking at that?
I don't know if it's Saturday or Sunday, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I told them I didn't think it'd be a problem.
Does anybody see a reason why that would be a problem?
No, no.
Are they gonna?
I told them they had the classes, I told them you had to bring the proof.
Yeah, as long as it's cleaned up, for sure.
I told them they had
That company has their own insurance too, right?
Yeah, yeah, because our insurance company will, that we get insurance for the weekend, they will make, I will have to give them a certificate that they have insurance. Or else we get charged for it.
Okay.
And Barb, as long as you're putting down, I think it needs to be, I want to make sure it's all right that we have, the Sweetie Festival has the use of the park up there for the weekend, not something that you can rent it out.
Yeah, for sure.
So, name names, but there's certain ones that.
I think, I think that was already addressed individually, so it's known that that's for the Swedish Festival that we
I mean, I know this is June, but I'd like to also, on behalf of the Boy Scouts, ask about the use of the truck room again for our food booth. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't see there should be a problem either of those requests. Anybody have any concerns about it?
No.
No difference than any other year.
Let's say you're gonna go.
Good, thank you.
All right, next.
Changing tables are in.
Okay.
Is maintenance going to install them?
That was my understanding for the purposes.
Hardware's with it, they're at the library.
Okay. I'll have them come up and pick them up.
Okay.
I can keep them in the back room by the doorbell.
Okay, okay.
They're not too heavy.
Anything else, Mary Lou?
Uh, did we get?
Playground equipment has been ordered.
Okay, the, um, equipment for the playground has been ordered.
Okay.
So, I don't know what the timeframe is on that, but we'll let you guys know as soon as the kids are here.
All right.
Did you end up going with that one that?
No, I went with, we went with a completely different one that, that was free shipping.
Oh, that's good.
Um, they, they went through it with me and told me what we exactly needed, and so, yeah, and it's, it was a thousand dollars cheaper.
Good.
All right, thank you for doing that then. Is that it? From you?
From me, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Kelly?
All right, um, so the summer reading program for the library is kicking off on June 12th. Um, the theme this year is "All Together Now." I'm wanting to propose a scavenger hunt to four locations along Main Street. Um, might be the library, obviously, the senior center, Cafe Soul, and Lick and Sip. Um, they will have two pieces of paper in the windows, one an instrument, "All Together Now," kind of musical theme, I'm struggling here, so I'll just deal with my idea here. Um, the musical theme, um, and then a word. So on their sheet, they would write the word and write the music instrument, but I'm proposing that they also draw something on the chalk on the sidewalk. And that's where I'm here asking if that's okay, and I know it's, I know the owners of the building own the sidewalk, but I want to make sure that everyone's okay with me having people sidewalk the chalk pretty much, um, at those locations, so.
I gotta hurt it, so, as long as it's sidewalk chalk.
Yeah, and sidewalk.
Yeah, no spray paint.
No spray paint.
Do we need to talk to the property owners?
I just wanted to get your guys' approval and blessing, and then I can go. I already talked to Lick and Sip, they have no problem, the library.
Can we extend it down this way so that when people drive through, they see, you know, some of the sidewalk? Does it have to be just in that specific area?
That's where the scavenger hunt clues will be, so I mean, if it gets full, I mean, we can, I can talk to the surrounding, like Frank, you know, like for the buildings and stuff, and our sidewalk, obviously.
Okay.
And then the fire hall, but I just want to get everyone's blessing first, and then I can go to, Lick and Sip has already pretty much said, yeah, no problem, um, but.
As long as I can permanently mark them in any way, it's not a big problem.
Pretty much first wash, and I'll probably rain the day out when we do it all, or something. I'm excited about that. All right, um, I'm asking for the front square, the library, if you guys have ever walked in there, it's kind of a dungeon. It's kind of a whole bunch of different types of material, et cetera. I'm just wanting to know, is there any way I can pretty it up with, like, maybe walking into a forest, or, you know, like, I don't know, like, maybe paint or something? It just, I have wood, I have outdoor siding, I have concrete, and then I have painted concrete as my options, and I don't necessarily want to paint on the wood, but just something to, you know, make it a theme, make it something that you're walking into. Um, I don't need an okay today, um, but if I can start pursuing and getting ideas and concepts, um, just to start making it a little bit nicer, um, more welcoming, um, it is your building, so.
I, I'm okay with it, to make it more inviteable, more welcoming for the kids, the parents.
Yes, before you're between the two doors.
I miss that part, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Um, but yeah, it's kind of, I invite everybody to walk through it and fresh eyes, like, actually look at it, and that's what a lot of people see, a lot of kids see that, so it's just kind of, it's not very welcoming, so if anything, to kind of.
I would say, I mean, I don't see that there's a problem with it, because you're not talking about doing anything structural to it, just design, um, if you want, when you have ideas, if you want to share them with us, um, especially if it's big and it's going to require
Any cause where we have to know ahead of time to, to make sure we can work it?
Exactly, yeah.
Because we already pay so much towards the library.
Right.
You know, I'm not trying to be rude, but.
No, I would be looking at grants, um, to, for beautification. Um, a lot of people do that for structures, et cetera, so I'm looking into, however, I don't own the building, so it would probably be another thing where I'd have to reach out to Barb and go, this is a grant that would be perfect for our need, um, et cetera.
And then make sure it doesn't impact accessibility of any kind to those doors.
I'd say as long as the library board is okay with it, you know, rather than places before, it's like, paint is paint, you know?
Would that be something like, you could utilize the youth to, I don't want to use the word graffiti, but, you know, something where, where the kids could just kind of feel free to paint something?
So that is the goal, is to incorporate them in some way, to have like secret hidden things to where they kind of have like their, they leave their touch on it. Um, I kind of like brainstormed with Jay Curcio, um, who did the frog on the side of Frank's building, and I was very thoroughly impressed with that. Um, and I just kind of said, you know, I'd be, I'd, awesome if we can maybe include people's names of like maybe past directors kind of through the trees and stuff like that, and also to make it, go ahead.
I mean, I just, I'm not trying to be dismissive or rude, but it's, it's going to go down in the weeds of your design, and I feel like you've got the approval from us to proceed. Um, if it's going to be anything that's going to be more, um, impact on the building
No, yeah.
Um, as you go through the design process, maybe talk to Barb. Um, other than that, take it to the library council, and I think you're good to go. Yeah.
I appreciate that, um, and I do encourage everyone who's not by the library to just kind of see what I'm seeing and what everybody who has new eyes see.
All right, anything else?
I do, um, Music on Six starts on June 15th, so I will get those dates, because I don't think I ever officially got those dates to Barb, so I apologize for that, but I will get that for Hilltop Heritage and personal due. Are the sidewalks complete? Because we have a porta potty that I saw someone walk into yesterday during Glory Quartet, and I'm afraid what's going on at the porta potty from the sidewalk people, and then we have a sign right by our property.
No, it's not, um, 100% complete yet. They have a punch list, and they're supposed to come back and dress when that's going to happen, I don't know, but we won't be cutting the final check until
Okay. And I assume that was why we still have those, it's just, I don't know if there's someone who can put a sign on the porta potty, like, don't use, because, or use at your own.
Risk.
I feel that, but yeah, thank you.
That it?
Yes.
Scotty, you got something?
No, just fire department stuff.
All right, um, Theresa, nothing?
No.
All right, we'll close public comment. Thank you all. We'll move into the mayor's report.
Um, I can't turn, but I just want to say a nice parade on the Memorial Day, thanks to everyone who, um, volunteered and helped with that. Thank you to the fire department for handling traffic control. I thought it went very smooth this year, everything was, um, great from a traffic perspective, and, yeah, it was pretty much, yeah.
All right, with her bringing that up, I'd like to, I thank you, continue my thank you for the fire department, because they're shorthanded, and Scott could not get people out to, so they could have somebody run the truck through. He had to use the people he had to do the traffic control around it, and I heard comments coming out of people that, you know, it's real nice to fire department, well, our own fire department couldn't be in the parade, but I think it was well addressed the way he did it, you know, he worried about the traffic control rather than, you know, trying to have to, you know, screw something up there to, you know, just to put a truck in the, in the parade, so, thanks, Scott, for
Thank you, guys.
If you get anything beat on your shoulders, send them my way, I'll toss them back.
And with that small manpower, they did a great job. Um, the traffic flow was very smooth, the detour, everything worked great. And then anybody who, who, if anybody's watching, um, join the fire department.
Yeah.
That'll help resolve these issues, you know, and membership is an issue at all these nonprofits. Fire department is a national service, if it's something you're passionate about, I'd love to see you down there, and fill out an application, see what you can do to help.
I have a question, Scott, though. In the past, there's been a, a couple of times, issues with belligerent motorists who did not like having the way to go around, was there, was there anything like that this year?
Nope.
Very good, thank you.
I stopped one 18 wheeler right at the very beginning, and he said, wake me up when it's open. Knocked on his door, took an hour nap, I knocked on his door, he wasn't happy, but, uh, uh, no, we had no, no, you know, no problems this year.
Good, thank you.
All right, if there are no additional questions or comments for the mayor, I'll take a motion to accept. Mayor, vote.
Second.
Tom, Ben, Chris, Paul is in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, the maintenance report, next.
Sure, um, Rick wanted me to bring up, I talked to him today, wanted me to bring up that they have contacted the county about those speedler, or, uh,
The radar signs?
Yeah, um, he's checking into, or supposedly they're gonna try to get a rep or something.
They, he, they got back to him, there is a rep in the area, they told him they'd call him in the morning.
They're trying to see what.
Frank mentioned that he has seen the malfunction a couple of times. I, I have not, I, I've got the one right by my house, I've not seen it, but they may want to just check the calibration and see if
Is that it underreported the speed by a lot?
Yeah, I think when it's been doing that, I think it was early morning or later in the evening once doing that, because the battery's not
Perhaps, maybe the battery, but maybe the battery didn't load.
I've never seen it doing the day.
I would think they'd be fully charged by now, though.
Yeah.
Give a thing.
Probably, yeah, but they're getting, they're dim, they're dim at night, coming into town, both of them are, or something. Might be a whole battery issue.
Yeah.
Batteries do a bad.
Well, that's what, he's got the rep coming to
They sat quite a while before they were installed. I'll motion to accept a maintenance report. Thank you.
I'll second.
Uh, Robin was just ahead of Chuck, Chuck, motion, Robin, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take a look at the borough manager's report. Barb?
Um, I don't really have anything more to add, but, oh, everybody got the McWapik thing today? Uh, I need the, it's on the 15th, and I need the, or it's on the 22nd, it's on the 22nd, and I need the, the reservations by the 15th.
Um, in the third bullet point that she has there, um, she had suggested the possibility of a committee to help with code enforcement, and, and we talked a little bit about it as well. And I do think it's a good idea, because Barb has her full job, and then she graciously agreed to take this on as well. And, um, I, I think that as a council, we could support her in that, in that it wouldn't be too much to put together a committee of two or three of us to get together maybe once a month, or if something comes up that's more urgent.
I think it would be good for you guys to oversee, I mean, then people know what's being addressed and what's not being addressed.
Right.
I mean, Thomas brought me stuff and several other people, um, but that way, you know, if there is something maybe pressing that I'm not aware of, or I'm not seeing, that needs to be taken care of, that you guys could say, well, Barb, this came to me, or
Right, and I think that's totally fair, other than trying to put it all on you, um, and then, like, we don't always necessarily know what's going on, it helps us all be on the same page, so if there's no objections to it, um, I, I am going to create that committee, and, um, anybody who's interested in being a part of it can let me know. And then in the next week or so, I will make the decision and put that together.
It's up to your prerogative to create and, and
Correct.
One way or the other with committees, so, you know, you'll be, either that or, you know, go to like streets of maintenance, the committee you already have on board, and, and allocate that, whichever you feel is necessary.
Well, for now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a new one.
Okay.
If anyone's interested, um, if it turns out that it's pretty streamlined and easy enough to do, that we want to roll it into another one, we can look at that down the road, um, but for now, that's what we'll try.
Is everybody okay with me applying for the county liquid fuel money for $1,700?
Oh, yes.
Do we need to motion that?
Yeah, it has to be addressed, they asked for it on the
I'll motion, I'll motion that we apply for
I'll second it.
Chris, Chuck motion, Chris second, uh, to apply for the liquid fuels for $1,765. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, just to let you know, I applied for a grant for the library, um, to make it handicap accessible through the county, the CBDG, because it's ADA, I didn't need a survey. Um, we also rolled in, uh, the drainage. And fixing the drainage, a new sidewalk coming up from the fire department parking lot to the back of the building with a new door that has the handicap button to open, and a cement slab.
Very nice, I think it was cement.
It was about $25,000.
Good.
Do they give you an ETA when they're going to?
Probably not till the fall.
Well, that's awesome.
Oh, and then my other thing that I wanted to address is, um, next month's meeting's on the 3rd. And the 4th is a holiday, so if you guys want to keep it on the 3rd, do you want to switch it for the following Monday?
I think we should switch it to a fall Monday.
I think we should switch it.
Whatever, I mean, whatever works for you guys.
Is everybody okay with switching to July 10th?
I don't have a problem with the 3rd either, so.
I'm likely to be there on the 3rd, and unlikely to be there on the 10th, so I can always call in and attend by speaker.
Whatever, you're gonna keep it.
Well, I, whatever you want to do.
Change it. Most people are probably going to want to get away, or at least spend time with family.
Think we should change it.
Rob, a toss?
It's fine by me. What's fine by you?
I don't care. Mark, you gonna be off work? It seems like it'd be here, go send Santa Claus.
Let's do, let's do it on the 10th. Chuck, we will
Well, I just wouldn't take that day off, then I would just, I would just stay here.
Don't worry about my work.
So do you want to motion that, or do you want to?
Um, do we need to?
We don't, I guess you wouldn't have to.
I mean, I think we can just declare it.
So July 10th?
We have to advertise it.
Yes.
We will have to advertise the change.
And then that's all I have.
Nothing actionable, I will take a motion to accept for that, or?
A motion.
Chris?
Second.
Who's second?
Rob.
Robin. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Take a few minutes, look over minutes, and stand out. Otherwise, they will stand as presented. There's no concern about the minutes, we'll move on. Take a look at the treasures report, pending the bills.
Thanks for transferring that money, Barb.
I just, I have a question, what, on the pending invoices, the rural liability $120 for
Yeah, but, uh, over here, when they came down Snyder Street, they clipped a gentleman's service line that filled his basement full of sewage. He called the contractor, well, you know, my guys didn't say they hit anything, uh, you know, everything should be fine, service lines are, you know, not marked by V1 call. The gentleman had everything full of sewage, and I told him, well, let's get Roto-Rooter over here, we'll get the contractor back, contractor came back, and it's going to be tacked on or removed from their final bill. They came, they did hit it, it was only that part of the sidewalk, uh, they busted it completely with the curb, um, they should have known better. They assumed it was old tile line, I know it's fine, well, it's an old town, everything's on tile.
Thank you for the explanation. Uh, one more question, the, uh, Kerry's lawn care, is, is it, is it me, or is that, is that going up price considerably?
Uh, it was $2,000 last year, we had them plant flowers in the urns, so the $200s for the flowers, we purchased flowers recently, we didn't give those away.
I thought it was found.
Entertained motion to approve
A motion.
Report and paying the bills?
A motion.
Chris motion's it?
I second.
Robin second. Any additional questions or concerns?
I need a question.
Yes, please.
What?
You have a question?
Yeah, the railing, they put on the abandoned building up there?
Yes.
Why'd they do that?
Okay, um, so, the abandoned building, the change is with that, yes, the building is abandoned, and it's the same thing with the steps to it. It's abandoned, there's no roof, and it's completely gutted, it's not structurally unsound, and if we're to, you know, facilitate expansion of the community, or somebody wanting to take on that building if we don't have it accessible from the sidewalk, uh, who's going to want to do it? You know, because I've heard that multiple times from different people while you, why would you put that there? Yeah, it's vacant, yeah, there's no floor in the first story, but it's not falling down, it's, it's bare bones, ready for somebody to do something with, and if we aren't going to do that, well, we might as well just tear the building down.
Good idea.
So that's, that's why we, that's why we did that, and it should have been caught when they adjusted the sidewalk, because they dropped it quite extensively, they, that shouldn't have been planted, and as well as Brian's office, those steps were part of that as well, and they somehow got missed, but were put in.
That's okay, good idea.
All right, uh, Chris made the motion, Robin seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all right, okay, move on to the committee's maintenance of streets and buildings.
Yeah, Rick pretty much covered everything in his maintenance report, and like I say, he's checking on the lights, and, um, and I think they're we got a couple of good guys there as far as taking care of, like, equipment and, you know, keeping the maintenance up on things, instead of just running it till it's, you know, has to be sent into someplace, and
Right.
you know, they, they, they do an excellent job with that. Brett, did you have anything else needed up?
Nope, lots of time.
All right, then. All right, move on to finance and insurance?
I don't have anything this month.
All right, how about personnel?
I have a couple of items. Uh, I got a phone call within the last month from one of the employees about an issue with a borough resident, and we had a lengthy conversation and discussion about how to address something like that when it comes up, and, and how to possibly diffuse a, a situation that, you know, that, that might be confrontational.
Is this a public encounter?
Yes. Yes, and, uh, I'm satisfied that the, that the employee, uh, you know, with, there was, there was discussion, and I, I believe we made some headway in that, in that, in that regard. Uh, I did not hear from, uh, the resident. Uh, also, uh, we had an issue just within the last week, uh, where one of the employees was using a piece of machinery, and, uh, something happened, and thankfully, the PPE, the personal protective equipment that was involved uh, did its job, and, and saved what could very easily have been a, a serious injury. And, uh, not only am I thankful for that, the, uh, the, the PPE item had to be replaced, which is, is minor compared to the, the potential for injury, which, that's what it was designed to do. Um, I'm confident and I'm pleased that the employees feel that they can come to us, they can either come to Barb, or myself, or somebody, and, and they know that they can come to us to, to discuss any issue. And I reiterate what Tom said, we have, we have good people, they take good care of the equipment, they take pride in what they do, and, and they take pride in themselves and their work. Otherwise, these two items probably would have, something would have tried to sweep them under the rug and not even make us aware, and so
They go above and beyond.
So from that perspective, you know, these, these things are, you know, you know, I am, I am aware, I am, you know, I'm involved, and I'm talking to them, and they are to Barb and to, to me as well, so that's all.
Great, thank you very much. Community development, planning, and parks?
Aye.
Uh, as far as under the parks up there, uh, the ceiling is up in the pavilion up there.
Okay.
Uh, we just, he still has to, we, we rip furring strips, or batten boards are called, to go across the cracks so the bees don't go up in. That's the only thing that's left to go out, you know, before the project's completed. And something I did do when I was up there, Rick and them, I don't know if they didn't understand, like, on the way the soft that was falling, so I went up, when I put the lights in, I fixed a patient's soft that across there that was falling out on the, on the building, so.
Excellent. All right, nothing else there? Uh, we'll move on to fire department?
I have a few things.
All right.
I got a broke down, maybe. One of the barricades that we borrowed from the borough, the, for the Memorial Day parade, they worked great, appreciate you letting us use them. They're up in our garage, whenever you want them, want them back, just give me a holler on, I'll, we'll let you have it back. Uh, the house on Division Street, you know, everybody knows that's all cleaned up, the hole's filled in, looks good. And, boy, about a year and a half ago, we tried to start getting a new F-550 utility truck. And since COVID hit, and all this other stuff has hit, we finally, as of today, it is being built by Ford. It's a 2023 F-550, it's just cabin chassis, nothing fancy, bare bones, basically. And the, uh, bed is already built, and we have to go, when the truck gets here, we'll take it down and have a bed mounted. But the beds aren't been bought and paid for for a year, so, you know, just waiting, but, you know, Ford and everything going on with the COVID and everything, it's just been a nightmare trying to get a truck. And, uh, that's about it, you guys took care of the parade for me, I was going to apologize for not having a truck in there, but I thought that safety was more important than putting a truck in.
You guys provided the service, we asked you to, and that's the problem.
Yeah, that's about all I have for fire department, if anybody has a job.
Question is, uh, is the new F-550, is that an addition? Question is, is the new F-550, is that an addition or a replacement?
That's a replacement for the utility that's up there.
Is, is that the one that had, has the mural paint job that is gonna be replaced?
No.
No?
No, the utility is just our brush truck, that's what we use for, uh,
Okay.
Out, you know, out, for out in the woods and stuff.
Okay, the, the, the one, what do you call that one that has the, what is, what's it?
That's a rescue.
Well, we've got.
That's a rescue truck?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to differentiate between them.
No, the rescue stay and the utility is just the, uh,
Okay, I know which one you mean.
Yeah, that's just a regular pickup truck.
Are you selling that guy, or are you putting it as a plow truck, what are you doing, you don't know?
My opinion is to get rid of it, but because it's just another mouth to feed. And it's pretty big to be a plow truck up there. So, they haven't really, we haven't really discussed it.
Yeah, we didn't make a decision on that.
You know, the bed itself was shot, for one. But the, you know, reason being we're getting rid of that truck and getting a new one is, we've outgrown it with the equipment that we're carrying. They didn't have a skid system, water system before. Now we do, we got, you know, we got all that stuff, so. It's, we've just outgrown, you know, that truck, we need a bigger one.
How old is the one that's being replaced?
Two, what is that, oh three? Oh three or something like that?
Okay, yeah.
So it's quite old, but I guess apparently they bought that brand new when they bought that truck, so, you know.
And your new truck is, is, there's funding available, or where do you, where are?
Yeah, uh, we'll do the, we get grant every year. Or, uh, John Pierce and the guys do the grant.
Okay, and that's already been secured?
Yeah, that's already been secured. Grant and everything.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, is that it?
Yep, certainly.
Alright, I don't have anything to add to that. Library, I feel like that was covered pretty well. So, uh, sure? Nothing really? Same old, same old. Alright, move on to old business. Let's get along here, the plan for the borough building.
I don't have anything for that right now.
Alright. Options to promote trail and park for the year, I know we're very limited what we can do, but it's still the year, so I wanted to leave it on there. Keep it in the forefront of our minds, if there's anything we can help them with. House numbers. I know, um, Barb has looked into.
I spoke with both Lewis Run Borough and Bradford Township. They said, um, how they did theirs is, you know, Lewis Run adopted an ordinance, Bradford Township already had one in place. They sent a letter to all the residents stating that they were going to be enforcing it. And they could get their signs and at, they also sold, Bradford Township did signs and stakes, or, you know.
Posts.
Posts, posts at the fire department, they did it through their fire department, both of them. So the signs were available, so I guess what we need to do, if you want me to, is do a letter up for the community.
Well, do we need to, um, we need, are, do we need to address our current ordinance? Because it doesn't seem to be exactly what, like I know Scotty and the fire department were looking for. So we need to decide what we need.
Well, yeah, cause it's not in the ordinance as far as if you ever want them out by the sidewalk.
Right.
You know, cause like, I understand what he's saying, when you're trying to go down the street and look at the numbers that's on the house. It's just like you go someplace, you look somewhere down, you're slow way up trying to look for house numbers.
Okay, so I guess the first thing to do is have the ordinance amended.
That's why the township did it, so that everybody's is out by their driveway or sidewalk, whatever, so you can see it when you're coming down the street.
About, uh, in the business district down here, where there's no grass, there's nothing to put them in, like, um, you know, all these buildings here and.
Well, they're both side of the road, that, that.
Well, is there any way as far as a bracket to mount them on the, like, brick or whatever facade is up front?
Oh, certainly, but it'd be.
You know, where it's.
You're gonna get to see it, wouldn't you? Ornament says within 25 foot of the road, if not, it needs to be posted out by the curb, that's what our ordinance stated when I read it.
Right, yeah.
So, I guess I misunderstood, I thought that they wanted everything on a post by the road, but.
Well, in, in, business district, it'd be.
On the side streets, is that what you want too? You want it up by the road on the side?
Cause some will be.
I understand what Brett's saying too, that up here on Main Street, you can't really put a post in the ground, cause there's no way of doing it. If there was some way we can mount the sign out this way.
Oh, so it's not.
Whereas it's not this way, whereas this way, when you come down, you can see it.
Or some, some sort of bracket.
Some type of bracket that'll be out there, and side streets, if it can go out by the road or out by the sidewalk, that's what we want.
Even if they have a sidewalk, you know, you put it behind.
So it would be possible to put together a small meeting with one or a few of us, you, um, and really iron out what we want as far as how we want the, what we want the ordinance to say in our language, and then obviously, we would need to look to amend it. Like, that way we can deal with the business district, how do we wanna frame this?
Did the township have the offer of theirs to you?
It's online.
Oh, it is? Cause they, I mean, if I remember right, from one of the residents that I put them in for down there, you know, it was, you know, it's in the ordinance and it's written up, so it might be, oh, I reinvent the wheel.
Oh, no, absolutely, I just, I.
I can get you a copy of the one.
I just, I just thought it might be good to kinda sit down and make sure it's what we want.
Okay.
And then address certain, if we have issues here that are a little different, how do we wanna frame that? And then, once we decided it, then we can proceed with actually amending the ordinance. Yes, sir.
I would like to float a, an idea or a balloon that may get shot down, but I would like to explore the possibility of the borough funding the first installation and making them available to all the property owners. This is a safety issue, it's, it's a safety concern to all of our residents, many of them are seniors with limited income. Obviously, the first responders have, have expressed their, you know, their concern about it. What are we looking at, approximately 400, 440 residents?
Yeah, approximately.
I believe it's something that maybe if, if we were to look at it, we could possibly put it together and fund it in next year's budget. I, I know, I know money's tight, I get it. I just believe it's something that, that perhaps we could look at and, and we could fund the first installation. That way, by making it mandatory, they can put in their order, we just get them made up and they come to the, to the borough or the fire department and get their sign. And then subsequently, it makes it easier, if they are not installed, then it's a lot easier to enforce a non-compliance issue. The second thing is, is I would suggest that, that the first installation would be covered by borough funding. After that, if they're damaged or destroyed or for whatever reason, then, then it's, if it falls on the property owner to, to replace it at their cost within a certain amount of time before they're found in violation. I, I, I believe that 20 bucks a pop or $25 a pop.
Yeah, 20 bucks a pop for 440, that's eighty, $800.
Yes, does that cover, would that cover the post and the sign, $20?
The sign is what?
The sign's 15 right now.
15.
We're doing the signs for 15 with no post.
And those posts, if I remember, I mean, that, now that's, it was three years ago, I put one in that was only, uh, it's under five bucks for when it was still posted.
I think the poles I bought for Ronald's, uh, Boy Scout thing was under $5, too, that I got them at home before.
And if we're looking at this type of a purchase, then I think we have time to, you know, once we get the ordinance written properly and, and we should be able to secure some type of acquisition in a volume to wait, maybe where we can get a, a better volume deal as opposed to, we're buying 10 now or 15 now or 20 now.
Right.
And, and, and it's also easier to implement the, the, uh, what's worth looking for in, in terms of, you know, it's either there, it's not, you know.
Is it enforcement or?
Enforcement, there's my word, thank you, ding 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 ding, we have a winner. Thank you, yeah, it's, it'd be a lot easier to, to implement enforcement by doing it. Anyway, that, that's my, that's my idea, I spoke briefly with Barb about it, I've talked a little bit about Brett. I, I realize it's gonna be, you know, but I think, I think we can squeeze that kinda money in, in the next year to budget and fund it.
That's gonna take us, once we have a meeting for the ordinance, and if we wanna make a change to the ordinance, it's gonna be a month for the meeting, month for the attorney, month for the advertisement passage. You're gonna be almost at the end of the year anyhow by the time we get.
Oh, yeah, we're looking at installation next year, probably.
Yeah, so I don't think it's a bad idea, look at the budget, see what you can do, if you can do it. Alright, if you can't, fine.
Any further thoughts on that, I mean, just leaving it up to people to see if it's possible?
Is it worth like posting that one time to see if people that come down and do it, might like, you know, on any other Facebook page now? Maybe we can take a picture and say, hey, reminder that you can do this. And then if you, you know, even if we knock off like 10, 15, 20 people.
Well, I mean, I, fire department's been promoting it for, for years already.
Yeah, most people like my house, if they go, it's signed well enough, cause it's on there, but it's really not, cause it's not reflective of them. If they look at what the fire department needs and when you're going through at night, what you can actually see. I always have porch light on, but if not, middle of the night, you can't see it.
Um, any other thoughts on house numbers for right now? Alright, constable's still on here. Did we close this discussion and decide we wanted to have them accessible? Should we, like, I felt like we'd listened to them and then we were gonna think about it.
Didn't think about it.
We didn't, that, we didn't, that's why I left it on here. And I don't know if we need to, or.
Kind of conclusion that we wanted to do it, but I don't know that we ever brought anything up about it.
It, it was, it was left that we would discuss it, when, when, before they walked out, if I remember right, it was just that we would discuss it and get back there. My, my thought on the matter is, is that the usage of them at times could be very effective and is, is not only a good idea, probably necessary, and I believe it should be left up to the borough manager to decide how to utilize their services if needed. And aside from ordinance enforcement, the other thing is, you know, I, I'd like to see them at least for part of the Swedish festival in the evening, a couple of hours in the evening, Friday, Saturday, Sunday afternoon. Friday, Saturday definitely, just, but that, that was my thought from the get-go, is that it would probably be the borough manager's choice and decision to utilize them, that's just there.
Well, I think it should be, be nice to have them utilized for when Barb's gotta, you know, you got a resident that's irate cause she's coming out to, you know, have to give them a second notice of taking care of something. You know, and you're not sure how that person, it might be somebody that's a little bit, like, oh.
And that might be something that, along with me and the committee, you know, they would, the committee could decide.
Decide, help decide in those institutes, yeah. Is there a fee to retain, to have like a retainer to hold on to them?
I don't, I, I, they, no, it's, it's based on, on.
Per diem type of thing? Was it like a per diem type of thing or like?
It's an hourly, they didn't.
So we don't use them when it doesn't cost.
I have a, I don't, I don't have it right here, but, yeah. But to like serve somebody with papers or serve somebody like, it's like $50.
Okay.
It was like a flat rate. And then if you wanted him for like, like the Swedish festival, it would be an hourly rate.
Okay, so do we want to motion utilizing said services of the constables on an as-needed basis, depending on what the, of pending committee and/or the borough manager, is that something we wanna motion?
I think so, cause there'd be an associated cost if, if we utilize them, so we want to motion, I think, on our discretion and this committee to use them as, as needed.
Yeah, it's a good idea for what we need to budget next year for, okay, we use it for festival, and maybe we have too many hours.
Yeah.
Maybe we have them enough, or, okay, look, we only used them five times from July or June to December, so you can get a rough idea of what we would need.
Right, so.
Alright, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Alright, that big old motion about them, does anybody second that? Alright, Chuck motions, Brett seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Barb, you can call them at your discretion. Alright. Does anybody else think of anything on old business? Otherwise, we're gonna move into new business. Um, I have benches and light posts put on here. Now that the sidewalk project is quote done, close to done. Um, obviously, we bought these light posts with the, with the nice little hanging sign things for banners and planters and whatever. And there's some towns that have flowers up right now that are very pretty. And we have a festival coming in a couple of months, so we need to kind of discuss how we envision using these. I had a suggestion even from a resident that, that we could make, like, allow people in town to, to sponsor or adopt a basket if we wanted to do flowers, and then they could be responsible for that basket. If, or if we wanted to figure out how to get banners, you know, put the second post back in and get Swedish festival banners, or see if they wanna get banners, I mean, we just, we have them, so.
We have a whole bunch of banners back there, grew up on the telephone poles, so.
Okay.
We could probably adjust them to fit likewise, but.
Right.
I'm a short guy, they're pretty low.
Yeah. That bottom bracket, I see that as a risk of vandalism, kids hanging.
That's why I had the guys take them down, because I was worried.
Could jump up.
They go up and pull them and snap them.
I think they look nice.
But if you had some on them, I think you'd be okay.
That's, that's the thing, is if we're, if we're using them, I think they would be alright, or at least it's worth trying.
Well, I like the ideas as far as trying to get people to sponsor a basket and take care of it. That way, we don't have to have our employees worrying about it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, what we could do, um, the, the way I kinda thought about it is if we just kinda start down here in this, in the business area, because the prettier we make that, you talk about the steps and the railings and all these things to entice people to say this is a place worth, you know, getting invested in, um, that's part of it, the, the new streetlights. And so, if we were to start that way and, and just kinda see how many we could get, and then figure out a plan of, do we provide the, the, the basket or the plant, the plant or the pot, whatever it's called? Um, and so there, those are at least uniform, and then they're responsible for what they put in them. Um, and then just kinda see how far we can get, if, you know, we put it out on our new Facebook page.
Probably gonna have to have it pretty quick, because I'm surprised Bell's is still open, people that have those pot and flowers.
Well, they're, they're, they're gonna do their sales soon and they're gonna.
That's what I'm saying, we got.
Flowers may not be a this year thing now, I mean.
I'm kinda thinking we're getting them, I wish we could, but.
What about our Gallup's, Gallup Avenue flower lady, is this something maybe, you know, if, if she, if we were to purchase that?
Well, you know, I got stuff for ladies, a bouquet for ladies' graduations, reasonable, very nice, they show up.
You know, I, I like the idea of having uniform baskets. And, and perhaps if, you know, that, that way if you, and, and they could be sponsored by, and we could, we could have one person doing the.
So all the flowers are the same and the baskets are the same?
Yes, but, and, and, you know, whether you wanna put sponsored by is Joe Blow or whatever. But that way, there's uniformity there and, and, and somebody has a little bit of pride to put them in.
Well, and that's what I'm, that's my thought, is if we have some pride involved, that, that even can cut down on vandalism too, just, just changing the perception.
As far as this year, I don't know if those banners we have, if, do they require a lower bracket, or could they swing free?
Uh, they got that low, they'd be slapping all over the place.
Are there a length where they could be, either they fit that or they could be adjusted?
We pulled them out and measured them when we had that meeting, and they're adjustable. I think we'd have to lower the bracket from where they were initially putting them.
Where they had them was.
So the lower bracket would be even lower?
Yeah.
Then upper bracket would.
With these are, yeah.
I don't think top bracket would have looked any longer, I, I think the lower bracket.
I'm looking at one right now, it doesn't appear to be all that, I, there might be some adjustment to it.
No, not even much.
Well, we'll have to look at that.
Because we, remember, we laid them out on the table and they, maybe weren't here, Chuck, you, yeah, you guys were here, you sat over there. We brought one out of the garage and it was substantially long, because we got the adjustable one, so we could do that. I just didn't realize these poles were as short as they were.
Yeah.
Because we need to.
I mean, look at these and see if, whether they could be resown, you know, shortened up and.
Yeah, brought back in.
To be used, maybe.
Are they pointing into the sidewalk or out to the street?
They're probably into the sidewalk, yeah. They probably have to, they can't be all over the.
Yeah. Alright.
I have a bit of new business, if we can make a motion to amend the agenda.
Well, let me finish benches real quick.
Okay.
Uh, so do we, with the, with the baskets, do we wanna pursue that and kinda see what we can put feelers out? And see if anybody's interested, put the word out, put a post together, I can help put that together with Barb.
Yeah, Tom, maybe we were thinking about, like, at the Swedish festival, we wanted to buy some special banners or something too, I don't know, that would be something.
Well, the, I mean, we have thousands of dollars worth of banners back here that I just hate to see go to waste.
We might as well try it, put them on there and, and.
You could see if maybe somebody could. You could see if maybe somebody could.
Yeah.
I'm not a seamstress, so it's, it's not gonna be me.
I wouldn't want to do a long banner and then a basket underneath that, because you're not. All right, so we'll proceed with that, all right, and as far as the benches go, Barb brought up a good point, we were kind of talking a bit more about the benches, they're on, uh, these are the, the ones that the coalition purchased. Um, the idea with those benches that they would be available year-round regardless of the weather, uh, because they're, designed for that, and the Swedish festival ones are not, and so we have people that sometimes want to be able to sit down and they can't. Uh, but as far as permanently affixing them to sidewalks, that is potentially problematic if, uh, ownership changes, because the bench is owned by the coalition, the sidewalk would then be owned by whoever owns the property, and then, like, is it better to just leave them free-floating as they are now?
Yes, I think so.
It, it seems like that might be the best option.
Yeah, because winter time comes, right, there's still removal, then you have issues, you know.
One happens to break or something, you move it quickly.
Okay.
I don't foresee any issue in Mountain Jewett because of the lack of a, uh, a, a, a commercial area, uh, that, you know, so on and so forth, I, I do know there is a issue in Kane right now, where they, they place benches on the street, and they're getting some loitering by senior citizens. Uh, we just have to be careful that we don't open up a can of worms, I don't see that for Seattle, because we don't have a lot of retail district right now. You just, I like the idea of them being mobile, so that if, if, if they're, you know, we can move them from point to point, for, for any number of reasons as opposed to try to permanently affixing them. We also have to be, you know, aware of, some people may not want. There, there is an issue on Fraley Street right now, I just became aware of it the other day, and it, it's, uh, it's got some people up in arms.
All right, so that's where I will stand for now, so now we're done with that, so Brett, you want to do amend the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, um, I want to talk about the potential of a new borough vehicle.
All right, um, can I get a second? Amending it, all right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Brett, floor of yours.
Okay. So I brought up a month or two ago about the possibility of getting rid of the twenty-twenty, uh, F-five-fifty, we've had issues with it, uh, some slight electrical issues, and then just issues with the gas engine and the central hydraulic system and the RPMs and such. Problem being, like Scotty had talked about, finding a vehicle, finding a super vehicle, finding one that wasn't gonna break the bank. I looked at F-five-fifties, diesels, similar to what we have in the blue, uh, twenty-sixteen F-five-fifty. When I was on council and first got on, and we bought the first maroon truck, I believe it was fifteen, fifty-eight, fifty-nine thousand dollars for everything, the bed, the plow, the hydraulics, everything. Now to get a comparable truck to what we have sitting there in the blue truck, it's a hundred and five thousand dollars, it's just, just, getting ridiculous, the cost of these things. Um, after talking with Rick, and really doing an evaluation of what we need, we have one back though, we have two employees. One dump truck would be sufficient, so we're not every, you know, every four to five years buying a hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. Since I've been on council, we started a vehicle replacement program every four to five years. We have had a truck payment scheduled in the borough budget, and have replaced these vehicles because, we've watched ourselves throw a lot of money into an old vehicle and got ourselves into a tight situation. So, after talking to Rick, we brought up the idea of having an F-three-fifty, a one-ton pickup truck, but actually a standard pickup. We had a one-ton, it was an O-three, I got it on council in O-five. It had a very heavy steel, or, uh, steel bed with the central hydraulics and everything, it was almost under, overloaded as it sat there, just cab and chassis. So when you put sand and salt in there, you're pretty much guaranteed to be overloaded to do the job. Um, it had some, torque converter issues, they got rid of it, and everything was covered under warranty. But the F-series, uh, the Superdews had just come out maybe two years before that, so, me and Rick thought this would be something, we had talked about just a regular pickup truck to do running around in the summer, it'd be a cab and a half, we had to haul anybody, uh, Barb, Rick, gone, whoever needed to go to a training if they have that ability, so I went about getting prices. Ed Horner got ahold of me, he's a salesman, uh, does Fords, or TriStar Ford. The Ford Motor Company is coming out with the six-eight engine, they're promoting it, and they are pushing it hard, we could have this vehicle if we order it in eight weeks' lead time. Which is really good, because we don't need a truck till October.
You could have it eight weeks.
That's pretty good.
You will.
So, um, this would be just a regular pickup truck with a slide-in, uh, block spreader similar to what some of the contractors use around here, and it would have electric over hydraulic controls, there would be no central hydraulics, thus the, uh, gas engine RPM issues would come into play with this. Rick's comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it. Um, the email price is, uh, at fifty-two thousand, the actual price in here, um, was fifty-five thousand, five hundred. Uh, but this is, you know, they have, this, this dealership supported it, but it's not agreed to that we'll purchase it, and I told him after this evening, if we are, get approval, we'll, we'll contact him, if not, they'll sell them, because people are hungry for pickup trucks. Uh, the outfit, I got a quote just this afternoon from Utilitack, and they're out of Ridgeway, PA, which is nice, because, any other outfit, we were driving to Delanda or Pittsburgh, just, you know, to go to Elk County, um, and, and I can make this available, I just got it, like, one o'clock this afternoon. Total price for slide-in stainless steel, uh, spreader, nine-foot, uh, plow with a carburetor cutting edge, and all the LED lights and attachments, for the truck and the labor and installation, is fifteen thousand, eight forty-five, fifty-four. Um, which is shocking, because I figured it was gonna be about twenty to twenty-five just itself. So, we're looking at, seven, seventy-two, what is it, fifty-five plus fifteen?
Seventy-one, four-ten, fifty-four.
Okay, so, the truck that we have right now, we owe eleven thousand on barter?
Twelve.
Twelve, and we make a payment next week?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's sixteen hundred dollars?
You're still gonna be at twelve, well, just under eleven.
Just under eleven, so we owe eleven thousand dollars on that truck, truck. When I first thought about this, um, Ed Horner, the salesman, actually had a couple older gentlemen that run Canoe Township, they're Canoe Township supervisors down by, uh, Pugsatonic. He says, hey, you know, this guy's thinking about getting rid of this twenty-twenty F-five-fifty gas, they had a twenty-twenty-two gas, we're thinking about getting another one, you can't get them in, the, the F-five-fifties, so they came up and looked at it, and their words to me, they called me every Tuesday, every second Tuesday of the month, the last two months, hey, so-and-so from Canoe Township, you guys gonna sell that truck? I said, I don't know, we can't find one. So they said, well, we'll give you fifty-five today, and I said, oh, you know, if we go to do it, I, I, I'd really like to have sixty, well, you, you get that sold, and just, put it this way, we're, we're salivating when we look at the pictures. We had trade-ins, uh, offers of fifty-three for the truck. If Canoe Township isn't willing to give sixty, I would say that we put it on municipal bid, and I would almost guarantee that we'd get sixty out of it, so we'd have, eleven thousand dollars that we'd have to pay off, plus the fifteen thousand, we'd be, you know, just over twenty thousand lock, stock and barrel for the truck, we have budgeted sixteen thousand in the budget as it is. Um, by next year, the truck will be paid off, and we'd have two years while we're under warranty to decide if it's gonna work for us, and if it is working for us, then we can replace the twenty-sixteen F-five-fifty, and we'll have two years' worth of that payment stocked up to put down, plus what we get out of that, that, uh, F-five-fifty, which I would say at the time, it might be thirty, forty thousand. I think it's a smart move, but the slight electrical problems we have, you never know the nature of those, and it's going to be out of, uh, warranty, so, you know, it's, it's my recommendation that we do this.
Do we have to put it out, Brett?
Huh?
Do we have to bid this out?
No, because this is a CoStar, if you sell municipality to municipality, you do not have to put it out for bid, and if they are not willing to give a sixty, we can put it on CoStar, or on municipal bid, which is bidding, and I would suggest that we put it at a minimum of fifty-five thousand, which will pay it off, so.
I just, I want some joy, thank you, what about the outfit, that too?
Uh, the outfit, we'd have to get pricing, but it's under the, uh, under the bid threshold, it's just simply phone calls, please.
Thank you.
Well, my question, Brett, we had a, what, a three-fifty before?
Yeah.
And you got beat pretty bad for what it was being used for as far as the plowing and different things, what's gonna be the difference if you had known to?
The difference, I think, is it does not have a heavy steel bed, because that, the gross weight on that, with that, those steel beds are extremely heavy, and you won't be able to overload this pickup as, in comparison, because it just has the dump spreader in the back, you can't pump it up, it'll only fit the two-yard, uh, maximum capacity up.
Yeah, I know the other one used to get way overloaded.
You, you can't do that, you're gonna be spilling into the bed and over it.
When they, when they load these now, these F-five-fifties.
They're overloaded.
They're squatting pretty good, but you, you can't overload that, that spreader box, you, you just can't put that much volume into it. I, I, I think it has its merits, especially on the side streets, it'll be easier to maneuver like at the cemetery.
Well, that's one.
And, and, and the areas where we're having complaints about, you know, the big truck does a good job, they do, but there are times when it sits a little bit tight, whether it's Dayton Street or some of the side streets in the cemeteries, the smaller truck might, might do better, and, you know, you know the guys are gonna say, okay, look, we, we, we'll take the bigger truck in, in this, in this route and the smaller one that route.
And I guess the big thing is, if it is not meaning it, we have three years' warranty on it, so if we're two years in, like, you know what, just like the last one, this isn't working, we should be able to get our money out of it and then some with the stainless steel spreader and upsize if we need to, but a hundred thousand, a hundred and five thousand of these trucks, unless, we have a market lease at which, it may be pleasant, but probably needs to happen. I, I don't know how we can afford these hundred thousand dollar trucks without getting way in over our head, or we have what happens with, you remember the Yellow International in ninety-five? And we put the new bed and the floor, had thirty thousand miles on it, sat there purring like a kitten, but we put more money in that.
That was the money, did it?
Yeah, so just trying to find something that fits the bill.
Well, what's, much to the borough manager's chagrin, I've been advocating for a small pickup, for the guys, a smaller truck for the guys to run around, I cringe when I see them, taking the plow laden F-five-fifty to run to Costas or go to Kane for, to, to, just to buy supplies, I understand why they have to do it. This way, a little bit, a little bit more cost-effective taking a three-fifty, uh, uh, parts and supply run as opposed to the five, the F-five-fifty.
And it is nice having the, the cab and a half, if, say, four of us are going somewhere, Barb and the guys need to go to training, you can put them all in the borough vehicle, and they're not driving their own vehicles.
True.
Anything like mowing, for years, Rod Peterson had his little pickup, and he'd put mowers in, the guys bought a trailer when they're hauling the F-five-fifty in a trailer around, because, the bed of the F-five-fifty is this high to try and put a push mower or something else in, whereas it's a regular pickup truck, you know, the mower, the weed whacker, the chainsaw, the toolbox, and you've got it.
So, so what, what do you suggest is the, should we motion to approve?
I would motion to approve the purchase of the pickup truck and get the quotes on the outfit, because we won't be able to do anything with that until, um, the truck is in, and we have to give two more quotes anyhow. And then I would also motion that selling this truck to Canoe Township for sixty thousand, if they don't come up to sixty, put it on municipal. And divest of it, um, sooner than later.
So that's your motion?
That's my motion.
So we have a motion on the floor.
You get all that, Barb?
I got it.
She can rewind it.
Oh, I got it, I was writing it down before you.
Chris seconds the motion, is there any further discussion on it? All right, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
You have a call, please.
Oh, well, they're all calling.
Wait a minute.
Oh.
Robin?
Aye.
Just now I'm putting your names down. Chris?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries. All right.
Okay.
All right, um, nothing else is on the agenda, so is there a public response to what we discussed tonight?
I'm reaching out to the local seamstress and see if she would be comfortable with doing the banners, um, shortening them, um, see if she'd be able to do fifteen, twenty of those and see if the cost. Is it, is it a real plate material, Tom?
It's canvas.
Who is that to?
I'm reaching out, reaching out to Jeanette from Camp JJ.
Oh, Jeanette.
Yes, I didn't know if she had it strong enough, I know you have to have like a, a heavy duty, but, so I'm just reaching out to her, but if she doesn't, I'll see if anybody else may be interested, see if that's even an option. I do know in past, um, communities that we've been a part of, they had the baskets on like some, sort of like a wheel, um, to bring them down to the water room. But I know, uh, Jane Burnecki had suggested, um, doing flowers, uh, at the beginning of the town, so I think that she would probably really be on board for doing something like this. Again, I don't know about cost, but I think if somebody, um, could even easily put that out.
We'll just talk to her, and then we'll put the thing out, see if we can get sponsorship, so we'll look forward on that.
Maybe talk to your Monday, like, every other Monday library, uh, quilting, crocheting, whatever club. Maybe somebody goes there, maybe they come up with something, I think they'll do that.
All right, if there's nothing else from the public, I will accept a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.